All right, Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Good evening.
Let's do it this way.
Mayor, do you have the city council last year background when you were on Zoom?
Yeah, when you issued one.
Start of both new. Good to the store. Inside the army. It's eager for.
He has to take it in with him, take it down with his office.
Right.
All right, Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready. Good evening, welcome to City Council. Sugar Land City Council meeting for Tuesday, January the 5th. I hope that everybody in the community had a wonderful Christmas and a Happy New Year. Tonight, we're going to start with the invocation. And it'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. And then we have a special recognition. And I think you're going to especially enjoy the recognition tonight. So with that, I'm going to start with the prayer. You'll join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this, our city, our residents, businesses, and employees, who make this a special place to live, work, and play. We ask your blessing on our police, fire, EMS, and staff, as they not only protect us and keep us safe, but provide an unparalleled level of service. Grant us the wisdom to represent all the people and help us to have compassion for those that are less fortunate. Bless our great nation, the men and women of our armed forces and special forces who give their lives to protect the freedoms that we enjoy. May we always remember that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by you, their creator, with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I ask all these things in the name of above all names. Amen. Now, if you'll join me in the pledge. Let's knock it down. Everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we're going to tear up, tear it up, we haven't even got to it yet. We truly do have a special recognition tonight. This is a recognition for Ms. Sabrina Russler, Lemonade Day Houston, 2020 Youth Entrepreneur of the Year. And let me read a little bit about this extraordinary lady. She was named the Lemonade Day Houston 2020 Youth Entrepreneur of the Year. Lemonade Day is a program that teaches youth how to start, own, and operate their very own business, a lemonade stand. Sabrina's fresh and juicy business goals are to offer healthy drinks all year long to her customers. She has expanded her business model and is having success selling her delicious drinks at pop-up events in her own community. In honor of her father, who passed away from cancer a few years ago, Sabrina donates a percentage of fresh and juicy earnings to the Dr. Marnie Rose Foundation, a local brain cancer organization. And now, I'd like to ask her mother, Jenny Russler, and Sabrina to join me on the podium. And then we'll introduce some of our guests. So if you guys could please come up. Let me put my mask on here. Jenny, would you like to say a few words first?
Thank you. Sabrina has been an amazing, an amazing entrepreneur. Sabrina has been participating at the Lemonade Day Organization since she was seven years old. I actually put her there trying to make sure that she was not one of those kids that will be just getting into electronic devices, maybe just a way to kind of learn a little bit. And she actually learned what I did learn for business when I was in college. So this is amazing that she actually was a person that took advantage at a very early age for doing this and for just kind of thinking about, not only in her business, but also in the community. He, my husband, passed away three years and a half ago, almost four years is going to be this year. And he actually suffered brain cancer. When I told Sabrina about the philanthropy, and philanthropy is a big word for kids, she asked what philanthropy was. And I mentioned to her, Sabrina, you might want to give back. You might want to give back, and we just need to choose what we do. Part of the Lemonade Day Organization's goals is to teach the kids, not only the business acumen, but also to give back, because that's one of the things that actually make your business not only better, but make you better as a person. So what she mentioned is, because she actually has been giving back in many other things, like little drawings, little things that she feels about, like older people, she said, well, let's do it for the brain cancer. I would like others to have another chance. My dad didn't have a chance. He passed away. Brain cancer is a very bad illness. There is no cure for that. And we would like to contribute at least in a little bit for finding a cure.
Sabrina, would you like?
Hi. I started this when I was seven years old. And I've had a lot of support from a lot of people that I love, like my mom and my grandma and other friends. But I'm just very grateful for everything that they've helped me with. Right now, we're getting to expand our business, well, my business, into other things, like shirts with our logos and friendship bracelets. And I have one, our prototype, on right now. I'm really happy right now. And nervous. But I'm just overall happy that I'm getting to do this. And a lot of people that I've had interviews with say, wow, you're, you're, you're doing better things than I did when I was, and I'm 30. Yeah, and we've had a lot of interviews and everything. And I don't think that's the most important part of my business. The most important part is that I donate and I show others that you can do a lot of, a lot of things. Or, and even if you're just nine years old or seven, at the time, I was seven. And I was awarded the award of the Entrepreneur of the Year. And, and for, well, for Houston. And I'm very grateful to have Ms. Gage Jackson as, well, she was very kind. And, and the first time we met her, she was like, hello, welcome to the organization. And I, and I learned a lot from that. And that's what, that's what makes me a lot, a lot successful today. And, yeah. Thank you.
If I might, I can, sorry. I just wanted to have a special mention to Ms. Gage Jackson. She's not here today, she had a conflict. I know that, I'm not sure if Ms. Debbie Nisarian from the Lemonade Day Organization National is here. She wanted to specifically congratulate Sabrina. Because of the organization, they have entered her and her results for the entire country. And she was, you know, one of the runner apps for, for the actual final prize. But she did get the one locally, which we were very happy for. And we are here to support her. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce, I think, your grandmother and grandpa?
So my grandmother, Lucy Orosco, she has been the creator of the recipe. So what has happened, and this is a fun fact, is that we actually were invited for the Lemonade Day Organization to start like a contest. And it's like, well, we're going to do the contest and we're going to do, what can be different about lemon, powdered lemonade? Maybe lemonade, juice squeezed lemons? Well, Grandma had the secret. To be very honest, she was the one, we didn't win that contest. But she was the one that actually created that for Sabrina. She helped her. And she wanted to, to tell her that, you know, it can't be different. So now, maybe Sabrina can tell.
Yeah, so when, after that, when we came home, she was like, no, you don't do it like that. You have to do it like this, and it tastes good. And so one of the things that makes our lemonade different is the, the raw sugar. And that is, it's way healthier than the regular sugar. And since I'm, my goal is to be, have healthy drinks for kids, that was a big help. And it also is from our heritage, because we're from Colombia, and that's used a lot there. And so, and our, we have four different flavors of lemonade. We have muddy buddy, which is our signature, raspberry, which is my grandpa's favorite, strawberry, and regular with agave.
And then Sabrina's grandfather is here, is Lynn Raisler. Yeah, my, my father-in-law.
Well, we've got a certificate of recognition for you. Officer of the Mayor of Sugar Land, Texas Certificate of Recognition, presented to Sabrina Russler. Lemonade Day Houston Youth Entrepreneur of the Year. This certificate of recognition is presented to Sabrina Russler for an exceptional nine-year-old fourth grader, who is the owner of her own business, fresh and juicy, and grew her business during the pandemic with over 5,000 participants, winning the Lemonade Day Prize for the greater Houston area. Lemonade Day is a fun, free, and experiential program for elementary school children that teaches entrepreneurship, financial literacy, and business skills. Sabrina is using a percentage of her earnings to honor her father, who died of brain cancer when she was six years old, and to help search for a cure for brain cancer by supporting the Dr. Marnie Rose Foundation's Run for the Rose and Memorial Herman Hospital, where her father received treatment. Sabrina, congratulations to you. You're an extraordinary young lady. And we present you with this certificate of recognition. And I think we're going to get, we've got to get pictures, Jake. Jake's ready. And I think we're going to. How's that work? Does that go over your shoulder? Counsel, I think it may be easier, y'all put your masks on, we're coming out. That won't look like you're frozen.
Bank teller.
You won't look like a bank teller. No, they're all okay in a bank teller. We'll get the counsel behind you. If you guys could step right up here in the middle. If you'd like your grandmother or grandpa to come up. Congratulations. Yes, thank you. You know, I think just like that. Yes, good. Really rolling. We'll get it.
Let's switch, you hit this way. Come this way.
All right. And here we are, and three, two, one more. Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm sure when we see y'all some more, I'm sure seven years old. Oh. Yes.
How we came about on the license agreement, what kind of what's involved. And then Councilman Ferguson, if you've got any specific questions and how to address those.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The lease agreement I was talking about today provides us the ability to put some power equipment on top of the minimum building behind City Hall. So we had one that I think we did in 2010 and it expired a year and a half ago. And we've been in negotiations with Lionstone to get that agreement renewed so that we can keep our equipment on top of the building.
And Lionstone, I think, is the owner of Sugar Land Town Center. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
William, do you have a specific question?
Mine is more for the auto renewal for 19 years. Why 19 years? Can you give me some background on that, please?
Yes, we know it will be on top of the building for at least another 15 years. And we didn't want the agreement to expire on us during that time. And when we set it up, we wanted to make sure that we had a 90-day termination notice on that agreement. So we won't be there for 20 years, maybe. But if we do need to get out of the agreement, we only need to get a three-month notice.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. No further questions.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Uh huh.
Got a second? Was that McCutcheon?
Yes.
If you'd voted this time, please. Okay, I'm in also, so we'll have, that passes seven to zero. Well, you okay moving forward on the rest of them?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're going to take item, item A, C, D, E, F, and G is, is one motion. Do I have a motion? I've got a motion by Cromali. Have you got a second by Jacobson? If you'll vote at this time, please. Mine's not working, so we'll, I'm also in, so it's a seven oh vote. Thank you, Councilmembers. Item number three, Budget, three A, Consideration of an Action on a Budget Amendment in the Amount of $3,580,184 of the Sugar Land 4B Corporation Fiscal Year 2021 Budget from the corporation's fiscal year 2020 carryovers. We have with us tonight Jennifer Brown, our Director of Finance. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The Sugar Land 4B Corporation is one of two economic development corporations that is managed by the city for our finances. The fiscal year ended September 30th, and while we don't have audited results yet, we do have preliminary results that are currently under review by the auditors. We're pretty confident in the figures, but just want to clarify that those results could vary if there are any audit adjustments that need to be made. We ended fiscal year 20 with revenues over, the actual revenues over the budget in the amount by $254,441, and expenditures with savings of $3,220,268. That includes $2,946,800 in reserve for opportunity funding. We had initially budgeted $3.8 million in reserve for opportunity funding in the corporation. And we reduced that amount when the, when COVID hit until we reduced the sales tax estimates and we reduced the reserve for opportunity funding as well. And so what that does for how we're ending the year is we ended the year with bottom line, center column, $6,414,506 in available fund balance. The actual is $3,588,184, higher than the budget's end to end the fiscal year. Next slide, please. On December 16th, the 4B Board members approved carryovers totaling that amount, $3,588,184. That included in that figure is $148,298 in operating carryovers, with the majority of which is the sweep cash program that has been funded by the corporation, along with $45,798 in professional services. The remaining budget, actual versus budget of $3,431,886 is being recommended to be carried over into fiscal year 21 to supplement the reserve for opportunity funding that is already budgeted in fiscal year 21. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. And so what that will do for the fiscal year 21 budget is essentially we're just rebudgeting the actual amount that we ended the year, the savings or extra revenue combination from fiscal year 20 is we're just reestablishing those funds as part of the fiscal year 21 budget. If you look at the reserve for opportunity line item, you'll see that the majority is going there. And that allows for the most flexibility for the corporation to support any opportunities, I guess, business, sorry, because that's really what that line item is for, going forward in fiscal year 20. It's strictly a budget item. Any use of those funds then has to be approved by the board as well as City Council. Next slide, please. So essentially, this slide is summarizing what the beginning and ending fund balance will look like. And while we have our original budget showed us ending with $2,428,401, this offset by the adjustments to sales tax rules essentially puts us right back there at that same place. So we're carrying over the $3.58 million. We had $105,000 in reduction in the amount of sales tax that was approved. That just has to do with the timing of the payments from the state to the corporation. And so the net impact to fiscal year 21 is zero. Next slide, please. The board approved these carryovers after December 16th meeting. Under the corporation's bylaws, City Council's approval is required for any budget changes that the corporation has in an issue to be approved of their original budget. This amended budget would be reflected in the second quarter financial reports. Sorry, January figures and staff recommends approval of the Sugar Land 4B Corporation budget amendment by City Council. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I've got a, I've got a motion by Lane, got a second by Cromali. If you'll vote at this time, please. And it's a seven oh unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Thanks, Jennifer. Item number four, Donations, four A, Consideration of an Action on Acceptance of a Donation in the Amount of $118,856.66 for the Eagle Plaza Development and TE Harmon Outdoor Patio Improvements. An Authorization of a Budget Amendment in the Amount of $118,857 in revenues and expenditures. And we have with us tonight Daphne McKinney, our Strategic Planning and Philanthropy Manager, Kimberly Terrell, our Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. Daphne, Kimberly?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am pleased to be before you this evening on behalf of the Legacy Foundation, in your acceptance of two very generous donations that we will take together as one item. I will introduce the first, and then Kimberly Terrell is going to introduce the second. And just as a reminder, the mission of the Sugar Land Legacy Foundation is to promote community investment in facilities and activities that enhance the long-term prosperity and quality of life of Sugar Land residents. Both donations, of course, are in line with this mission. And we're going to take the next few minutes of your time reviewing the donations, the donors, and the projects. But before I begin, I am pleased and honored to share that the donors are on the call today with us. Both donor couples are longtime residents of Sugar Land. And at this time, I would like to welcome back Doctors Allen and Antoinette Kramer and introduce to you for the first time Colonel Raj Bala. Now, they will each be more formally introduced as we go through each item, but I wanted to recognize at this time that they are on the call.
Thank you, Daphne. Welcome. To the Kramer's end, Mr. Bala. Thank y'all for coming.
So moving on to the first of tonight's donations, this one applies to the Veterans Memorial Eagle. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as a common citizen, a formal introduction, Colonel Bala and his wife are Sugar Land residents of over 25 years. After retiring from remount and veterinary corps of the Indian Army, Colonel Bala was offered a veterinary position in the US and practiced here for over 30 years. In their retirement, they are active in their community organizations, and they can donate to the Legacy Foundation through its president, Mr. Sunny Schorn. The Balas generously donated $1 million to local charities back in August, and the Legacy Foundation is honored to have received $100,000 of that. And we met virtually with Colonel Bala and discussed the opportunity to honor veterans given his previous service, and he was supportive of the idea and humbly desired no particular recognition. They expressed that they were simply happy to give back and hope that their donations encouraged others to do. Staff is already brainstorming some creative and subtle ways to celebrate this donation as well as find a way to subtly recognize their generosity at this site itself. Next slide, please. A little bit about the project. This is just a quick refresher. You may already be familiar with this. There was a Blue Ribbon Task Force that was established by the council several years ago. The citizen group determined certain features and locations within Sugar Land Memorial for projects that would memorialize our residents. And to date, the city has completed two of the four projects, including the flags that honor each branch of the military and the Veterans Memorial Tower in Missoula. So the two remaining projects are the Eagle Plaza and the Wofford Home Statues. And I'm so pleased to be reporting today with the ability to complete that third project, Eagle Plaza. Next slide, please. As you are hopefully aware, the Eagle statue was installed in March of this year, and it is stunning. And as you can see in the photo, thank you again to those of you who helped make that possible. The next phase of this project is the development of the plaza area, as you can see in the drawing on the left. Staff anticipates contracting on the design as the first step and first usage of the donation, and then they'll be planning for construction shortly after that. And at this time, now that you know a little bit about them and the project itself, I would like to formally introduce Colonel Bala to you and recognize him and his wife for their generous donation. And a particular note, Colonel Bala speaking directly to you, I understand that you recently celebrated a milestone birthday, so I wish you, on behalf of the city, a very happy belated birthday. Now, that is the end of the Eagle Plaza item. Mr. Mayor, would you like to pause at this time, or would you like to move on to the carryover donation?
Well, I'd like to thank Colonel Bala for, he and his wife, for a very generous donation. We appreciate that. We appreciate your good work in the city of Sugar Land. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Daphne.
Next slide, please. At this time, I'll turn it over to Kimberly Terrell, and she's going to talk about the TE Harmon Center improvements.
Thank you. Next slide. Oh, there we go. So in 2018, Doctors Allen and Antoinette Kramer approached the city with a very generous donation of a little over $57,000. They're medical doctors and have a passion for health, and they had the vision of adding a fitness element to the TE Harmon Center, which, which we took on. Next slide, please. So with that donation, and those are pictures of the project that was completed this spring, with that donation, we've been able to convert the library area to a fitness room and add equipment there. And we've also been able to add mirrors to the multipurpose rooms that are often used for fitness classes, and those were a very, a much requested item from our purchase events to be able to better see and chart their form in those rooms. Next slide, please. So in late 2019, the Kramers approached the city again with another generous donation of nearly $19,000. And this donation combined with the remainder of the 2018 donation will be used to again enhance the outdoor patio area and make it a more pleasant outdoor room. When the Kramers visited with us and we presented the completed fitness center, they, they, they explained that they had a passion for really making that outdoor area more usable. Right now, it's a western-facing area, which makes it very, very unpleasant on hot days. So this donation, we primarily used to create a retractable shade system that will help make it usable all year. And I'd like to thank the Kramers for both of these donations. They've been tremendous to work with, and we're very happy to be able to help their visions come, come to life in the center. And I'm going to hand it back to Daphne this time.
Next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends your acceptance of donations from the Legacy Foundation in a total amount of $118,856.66 for the Veterans Memorial Eagle Project and the TE Harmon Center improvements. And with that, I'd be to answer any further questions.
Thank you, Daphne. I'm going to ask Colonel Bala, I think he's taken off his mic. Colonel Bala, would you like to, would you like to address the council and actually the city? Say a few words?
So, Mayor and the members of the council, frankly speaking, I have nothing to say because I'm sure you are definitely going to support this project very deeply. And as I can see, Eagle Park, and for all the coin objects, it's really well worth it. And although I'm not served in the US military, but you know, these soldiers are the same everywhere.
Yes, sir.
Our mission is the same, so it is just out of that love and not killing for the support of this project. And thank you so much, our great members.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Really appreciate and love the city and having the opportunity of meeting you for a time. The last time I was at Fernando's, I found I didn't. I'm going to change to surpriseingly to introduce whoever comes to general vision. I don't know if you can correct that, but anyway, thank you so much, and very glad.
Thank you, Colonel Bala. Thank you, thank you, your service to your country. Are the Kramers on, Kimberly? Would they like to say something?
And do we have them on, Thomas?
Yes, let me see if I can get them on mute. I see them on, they maybe have some audio trouble.
Well, they've been, they've been great supporters of the TE Harmon Center, great supporters of the city, great residents. As, as you said, Daphne, they're both doctors. And I still remember getting that first call when they said, we'd like to do something for the TE Harmon Center. They keep, they keep coming back. They've got real big hearts, and we hope to have them in our community for a long, long time. Thank y'all both for your donation. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion by McCutcheon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Lane. You'll vote at this time, please. I can't imagine there'd be anything other than a seven oh vote. Thank you very much. It is a seven oh vote. We can confirm that. Thank y'all very much. Colonel Bala, the Doctors Kramer, thank y'all very much. Item number five, Contracts and Agreements, Consideration of an Action on Authorization of a Contract with KW Industries, Inc., in the Amount of $0.5 million for Traffic Signal Pole Assemblies. This contract will automatically renew for four additional years for a total contract amount of $2,500,000. We got James Turner, our city traffic engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, for your consideration, is a traffic pole assembly contract. The contract aims to supply traffic signal pole assemblies for the city projects and maintenance, but it also includes roadway lighting poles and wait line, wait line signing poles, as seen in the images on your screens. The contract specifies bid items, bid item requirements like ornamental bases, also shown there with black dot coating. These bases actually have the city logo on them, and of course, all of these poles meet TxDOT standards. Next slide. So prior to 2010, the city was experiencing long delivery times. The standards have not really been established fully. The standards were kind of based off the town center area, the town center area there near City Hall. With these challenges, the city decided to go and try to bid, bid out a contract again in 2010, a multi-year contract to kind of address some of these challenges. So the first contract was awarded and established recurring, it was established as a recurring contract. It had inventory which helped with the shorter delivery times. It established these standards fully. The open contract supported again our CIP projects, maintenance, and emergency repairs. So again, the main purpose was to kind of get these items on a contract. They're there if we need them, use them as we need them, but they're there to support any, any city projects. Next slide. So this year, we again put out a contract, a competitively sealed bid, five-year renewable contract. It's a unit-based contract. Again, these bid items are there and we use as many as we need or don't need. The invitation was bid out or posted on October 28th and November 4th. The bid was opened on November 19th. There was only one bidder, KW Industries. Today on the call, we do have Andy Pitt group with KW Industries. The last 10 years, actually, KW has won this contract. They're a city of sugar land business and industrial park. They have done very well for us in supplying all these bases and these poles for us. They're currently supplying the ones for the State Highway Six project. The funding is, is not set, is again from various sources, CIP typically, or O&amp;M as needed. And the contract amount was for $500,000. Next slide. So tonight, we are recommending that the contract be authorized with KW Industries in the amount of $500,000 for the traffic signal pole assemblies contract. The contracts were automatically, automatically renewed for four years for a total amount of $2,500,000. Next slide. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Any questions of James? Steve?
James, good evening. Is KW the same company that built our, the lights around the plaza and smart monitors?
Yes, sir. Good point. Yes, sir.
They did a great job. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
You have a motion by Porter, or do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Cromali. Stuart, go ahead, question.
Thank you, Mayor. James, on, on other contracts that we, that we have, when we go out for bid, we have an engineer's estimate. Did, do we have an engineer's estimate, and did our one bid come in close to that?
We do not have an engineer's estimate. We can compare this to the last contract, and it came in about 5.9% higher, but that's the best comparison we have.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
William, go ahead.
James, I am curious, because most of the items that I've seen come before me will have multiple bids. Is there a particular reason this, this will only receive one bid? Is it such a unique service or product? And if, once you answer that, my second question was simply, why would this need to be extended over the four to additional four years?
So to the first question, there was another party that was interested in the contract. They could not meet some of the requirements. The ornamental basis, they do not have the equipment to manufacture those at this time, so they kind of bowed out. So those bases, I did not mention this in the presentation, but they actually protect our poles inadvertently. They actually take the brunt of the hit, unfortunately, and protect our poles, just a side note there. But so the second question, as far as the five-year contracts, we typically do this, it actually, the contracts per, the contract language cannot exceed any, any increase more than 2.5% every year. So that helps with the city kind of managing those costs. It also, it also helps with any gaps in our service. You know, quickly it renews every year, and we're satisfied with the service. They come into play, we get off and running October 1st, and we keep doing business as normal. And this is, this kind of goes with any kind of maintenance routine contracts that we have throughout the city.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Peter, I'm going to guess, Andy, that you all probably designed those poles, and you designed those to a more or less a performance specification. And, and you're based in Sugar Land. I think you're probably pretty darn good at what you do, or you wouldn't be able to, you've, you've kind of created a, like a mini oligopoly in terms of what you, what you've got. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, so would you like to address that a little bit?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You know, the poles are designed based on TxDOT standards. If you drive anywhere in the state, you'll see some sort of a traffic pole designed based around TxDOT standards. These are engineered designs. They all have to have the same foundations. There are certain elements that have to stay the same. With Sugar Land, there's a decorative element to it by adding the base. There's the powder coat over the galvanizing, which TxDOT does not have on their standards. There is a top plate to mount a decorative fixture as well. These are all things that KW helped design, A, to make the poles actually somewhat more affordable. Somebody asked earlier about, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name, about why was there only one bid? I think our six main competitors, there's only about six companies in this country that can knit these larger poles and do these items. And I think they all know that us being in Sugar Land, we are, we, we're not going to want to lose this contract. It's, it would be embarrassing for me to drive down the streets and be my competitors' poles at a traffic intersection. So steel has gone up significantly. When this contract started five years ago, steel was about 37, 38 cents a pound. President Trump, the terrorists raised steel up to the 60s. Steel went back down this year, but right now, we're in the middle of steel shortage, and steel is at 72 cents a pound. KW is going up about 10 to 15% across the board. But with the city of Sugar Land, as James said, we only did a slight 5% increase because we want to make sure that, we always provide the poles for Sugar Land. We enjoy the work. I enjoy working with James. Any council member that wants to take a tour of KW Industries, feel free to come by and contact me. You can see where the poles are made, right down the street in Industrial Park. As for those decorative bases, those are one of the items that really keep, you know, KW involved. For some other company to get those decorative bases, they would have to invest about $30,000 to $40,000 in tooling just to make those bases. They're not just decorative. As James said, they're designed to take a brunt of the car dent to break away and still protect the poles, which saves the, the city, any city a lot of money down the line.
Thank you, Eddie. Michael?
Mayor, just, for me, this is a huge success story for Sugar Land. It was probably about 10, 11 years ago, we were, James mentioned, we were having heck with our poles, and they were coming out of Pennsylvania in the late Mike Hobbs, and I think some others came up with the idea to go reach out to KW and try to talk them into, because at, at that time, they weren't doing what we needed. And so their CEO, James White, and Mike Hobbs kind of helped develop this, and they're, they've been a great, great partner for us. So it's always exciting to see when they, when they are low bid. And then as well, I want to brag on James Turner real quick. You know, we have the best employees, and a lot of them are often like hid away in a closet somewhere. It looks like he's in a shady, you know, closet.
Looks like he's in a green closet.
But I'll tell you what, James Turner is one of the most brilliant traffic minds in this country. We're blessed to have him on our team. People People try to steal him away all the time, and we try to show them how much we love and appreciate him, but the man is brilliant, and a lot of our success in the traffic realm is from him, so I just want to throw out some kudos to Mr. Turner. That's all I got, Mayor.
You're here, James. All right, Andy, thank you, thank you and your company for, one, not only being in Sugar Land, but for creating something a little bit special for us. I'll make the motion to approve. Who, do I have a second?
Second.
I heard somebody, McCutcheon?
McCutcheon.
McCutcheon, and I don't want to tour, so I'll follow Andy.
Follow me, come on by.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second, if you vote at this time, please. Any passes, seven oh. James, Andy, thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number seven, city council city manager reports. A, city council member reports. Jennifer, let's start with you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you skipped the night, the appointments for.
Oh, I did. I certainly did. How about that? Okay, item number seven, appointments. Consideration of an action on the appointment of a member of the city council's mayor pro temp for the period of January 2021 to May 2022. I'll make the motion for Jennifer Lane to serve from January 2021 to May 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by McCutcheon. All in favor? Vote at this time, please.
Can that play?
We got something going on. Stuart, you're out. Maybe not. There we go. We got a seven oh vote. Thank you all. All right, now we'll go to the city council member reports. Seven A, Jennifer Lane.
Okay, Saturday, December 19th, we had Toys for Tots for the Fort Bend County and Sugar Land Exchange Clubs, got together and had a phenomenal turnout. It was a very streamlined event, had a streamline of cars starting at 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, with a lot of people from the community coming in and getting toys for their young ones. And so we had a lot of youth out there volunteering from local high schools, getting their service hours in, and council member Kermally was there, and if I missed anyone else, were you there? You were there too, William, and a lot of other elected officials and community members were there. It was a really great event, and I want to congratulate them on being able to continue to put that on even in the midst of the pandemic, and it turned out to be a very good success.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jacobson, Stuart?
Mayor, since our last meeting, I had two lovely luncheons, one with you and one with Mike Goodrum.
I'm not sure, call it a lovely lunch.
In order of enjoyability, that was the order. And I also got my middle son married off, so.
Congratulations.
Big time for me, thank you.
Yeah, now you're broke. Thank you. William, let's go with you.
Mayor, I just want to report, sort of in line with what Jennifer was just saying, there have been unlimited evidence of the goodwill of our community over not only the Christmas holiday, but the multiple holidays that we just went through. And from inside of a church or a temple or just a home, I am honored to be a part of this community and the events that we've been able to attend, and I am grateful for everyone that has a giving spirit in our community.
Thank you, William. Nashad?
No, just for.
Councilman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in with the search committee for, that's looking for a replacement for Dr. Randall from Mark Consolidated Industries. He has resigned after a very long tenure. They've got a very large task in front of them to find somebody that can stay for that long and take LCISD to the next level. So I was privileged to provide my input on that search. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And Carol, last but not least.
No report, Mayor.
All right, I don't have a report. How about Mike? How about you? Item number seven, B, city manager report.
Mayor, just real quick, Happy New Year to the council and to our community. We stand ready to serve everyone this year and excited about 2021. I also, the holidays are a great time of year. It's also a time of year where we have many employees that are working through those holidays and not with their families, so we have parks employees, public works employees, dispatch, police, and fire. I'd like to personally thank them for working while we're able to enjoy the holidays and be with our family, and for that, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. One thing before we adjourn, I'd like to compliment Mike, the park staff. They did an extraordinary job with the Crown Festival site, the movies. I think I'd mentioned that Porter, I think that was your idea, staff did a phenomenal job of putting it together. My wife and I and Miss Emmy and Mr. Campbell, we attended one of those. Campbell was down for the count before they even opened the back hatch, so he didn't get to see Frozen. But Miss Emmy and Miss Nancy and I, we got to see the whole thing, and it was, it was pretty neat. So I know the community has really appreciated that. It's been a way to kind of get away from the, you know, the pandemic hoopla, if you will, and actually enjoy some time with, with friends and family. So staff's done an extraordinary job with that. I know we've got the plaza out here, still got the lights lit up, which is great, but I don't think it's going to last too much longer. I think it'll be pulling it down. So as you said, Michael well said, we're here to serve, so we look forward to serving the community coming into 2021, and may 2021 be a little bit better than 2020. Motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
You don't.